I'm calling the meeting to order, the meeting of the Intendent's School District 283, on the meeting of Monday, February 10th. A few minutes late, 7:09 PM. Sorry for the delay. First, we are going to approve the agenda, but we have a couple of changes to the agenda. I am not on the mic.
We have a couple of changes to the agenda for this evening. Thanks, guys, for telling me. We are going to be removing Discussion Item A, turf field presentation, from the agenda this evening that had been noticed a few days ago. We are also removing Action Item A, High School Master Storm Water Plan Approval. So, we're going to remove those two items, and what that leaves us with the agenda is the Superintendent's Report, Strategic Planning Presentation, Policy Development First Reading, Policy 519, Interviews of Students by Outside Agencies, Policy Development Second Reading, Policy 437, Staff Participation in Political Activities. And then, onto the Consent Agenda. And then, on the Action Agenda this evening, we have the Labor Agreement for our Clerical and Administrative Assistance of Park Schools, the CAPS group, then Communications and Transmittals and Adjournment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move.
Moved by Ken, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 7-0. Okay, first up Superintendent Osai.
Good evening, Chair Tomback, member of the Board. This evening, for my Superintendent's Report, I would like to highlight a couple of events that have occurred recently here in St. Louis Park. And one of them was connected to the City Council Meeting last week. Three of our teachers at Peter Hobart received the Human Rights Commission Award for the work that they did with Hope Speaks. So, those of you that are not familiar, Hope Speaks is a six-week class designed to address issues of race and racism among families with children in grades three through five. And essentially, the course allows families to examine their feelings and attitudes about race and blind spots, and really allowing them to start having difficult conversations with their children. Megan Malone, Kristen Pill, and Rachel Lebo were all recognized as the Human Rights Commission Award winners for the year. And what was unique about it is that one of our students is currently serving as the Human Rights Commission Chair, Amaya Foku. So, it was just a great night to be able to see Amaya award three teachers with the Human Rights Award. Also, I would like to just take a moment to acknowledge the 100-plus Aquila students in grades three through five primarily, but I also heard there were 10 second graders that performed this weekend in the play, or musical, by the way, Dear Edwina Junior at the high school. It was phenomenal. I had a chance to attend on Saturday, and I continue to be impressed by the talent of our elementary school students. And if you didn't get a chance to make it to Aquila's performance, there are going to be three other performances coming up from our other elementary schools. I know PSI will have their annual performance. Susan Lindgren this year has a performance, and Peter Hobart has a performance as well. And lastly, I would like to just take a moment to acknowledge and welcome our new Executive Director of Children First, Margaret Gano. So, Margaret was started today, actually, as the new Executive Director of Children First, and for the past 16 years, she's served as the Executive Director, CEO, and Director of Strategic Partnerships at the United Way of Southeastern Idaho. And the last, the past six years, she's really been focusing on leading an effort to launch what has become a nationally-recognized credo to career, community, and schools' education partnerships. So, we're excited to have Margaret here in St. Louis Park, and look forward to our collaboration with her moving forward. And that concludes my report for this evening.
And I believe people would be able to meet Margaret at the Children First breakfast that is coming up in March. So, Strategic Plan Presentation by Sarah Thompson, Director of Communications and Community Relations.
Good evening again, Chair Tomback, members of the Board. This evening, Sarah and I would like to spend some time just recapping our recent Year Five Core Plan, Annual Core Planning Meeting, and also starting to look forward to the development of our next strategic plan. I would first like to start off by thanking both Board Members, Board Member Waters and Board Member Casey, for their continued participation and involvement, and just really support of the work from a core planning standpoint. The conversation each year that I've been here has been inspiring and lively, and I would say this year was no different. This year, we tried a different strategy. Actually, Sarah Thompson took on the responsibility of facilitating the group, and she did a great job really allowing us to be in a collaborative space. And what I appreciate most about this process is that, you know, we take the necessary time to reflect on the work of the organization, to really get feedback around the things that we need to move forward with. And this year, our core planning team really helped ground us in what we need to do from a next-step standpoint. I really appreciated the thoughts that were offered as it relates to ideas for consideration as we move into our next strategic plan. The strategy that we used, one of the unique strategies that we used this year was, we really wanted to do an internal and external scan, not only focusing on St. Louis Park Public Schools, but understanding that St. Louis Park Public Schools is a microcosm of the larger community and country in which it exists, in the world for that matter. We really did this five-year scan, looking at, from a timeline standpoint, what was happening, for example, in 2015 in St. Louis Park, what was happening at the state level, what was happening in the country and in the world. And as we went through, it was really interesting to see some of the overlap and alignment between some of the things that we were facing here locally, and some of the broader things that were happening in the country and the world around us. It was a really engaging process, and one of the things about the facilitation that we've been trying to implement more and more over the past couple of years is really trying to elevate the participants' voice, and making sure that every single participant has the opportunity to share information. And we've started to explore and utilize this process called Technology of Participation, which really allows for multiple focused conversations, large group conversations to occur over a meeting period. And what we've learned is that that really gets voices in the room, and allows us to, in many respects, you know, come to consensus in a more concise manner. This year was no different. Pictured here, you'll see several different examples of small-group, large-group conversations. I continue to be thankful and impressed by the student voice that we've had an opportunity to increase over the years. And Sarah will talk about here shortly some of our ideas to even take that to the next level as we enter into our next strategic planning process.
Thank you, Esten. So, we also spent some time really talking to our current core planning team about what they appreciated from the day, really wanted to find out what was working so that we knew what to bring forward. And so, what we found out from the group, as they were ending this five-year stretch of process with the core planning team, was that they really appreciated the small-group work. So, we had really broken them into small-group teams throughout the day at various intervals to really switch it up. What we know about adult learners is, you can't sit and get for really long periods of time. You have to be up and moving at pretty consistent intervals, because we just, me included, I can't sit for long periods of time and maintain focus and attention. So, and it worked. They echoed that right back at me. And so, race was also really prevalent, of keep race on the table, we want to keep talking about it, anti-racist systems kept coming forward. And it also was nice to hear that we confirmed for really a lot of people in the room, what a great district we do have, and a desire to keep working hard to make sure that we maintain that ideal across the district. And then, as Esten just said, keeping that student voice very loud and critical across the next step for these processes as we move forward. So, that's what people had to say about the day as a whole, and some advice for us as we move forward. So, here's, I know you're, everybody's curious about what happens next. We're ending a plan, does that mean we stop our work? Of course not. You know better than that, right? So, we're looking at 2020 to 2025, believe it or not. And now, that sounds really far off. So, here's what we're looking at as a proposed timeline. So, it's February now, so we're looking at just finalizing our team structure, our process, meeting dates for this spring, and what this looks like. You'll see March through May as kind of our gearing-up process, data analysis, gathering information, getting stakeholder input. We went through this same process before, for those that remember, or maybe you were involved in it. We'll be recruiting core planning team members, we'll be doing some environmental assessments and some more scanning internally and externally, so that we have some really good information about what's going on in our school system, what's going on in our community. For those of you who were around last time, we prepared a data book that was about four inches thick. If I was going to look in my crystal ball, I'm going to say it's maybe not a book this time, it's maybe a very robust Google Doc, if I was to look in my crystal ball. But something like that, that puts all of our information in one place, you know, not only really robust data from Sylvie and our Research and Data Department, but also basic things like demographic trends, information from our city about housing, state trends, things like that, testing data, you know, just kind of anything that would inform decisions for our core planning team. We want to gather that, so that as we're doing our work, there's never a question that can't be answered that would slow us down. And so, that kind of work will happen in the spring. As Superintendent Osai mentioned, student voice, student voice, student voice, right? We just can't get enough of it. We want to hear from our students. They're really the ones that will change our world, they're the ones who will change our school district, and really allow us to excel. That being said, we have this fantastic idea that's been brought to us by some of our consultants, echoed by Dr. Duffy, and several other members of our Cabinet, of a youth conference or summit for student input and engagement. So, we have this idea that round about June, end of the school year, we would gather together a large group of students, and for a period of two days, we would engage them in a youth conference. And so, we would get their best thinking about what do they see, what do they hear, what do they experience now in our schools, and what is their best thinking for what school could be for them in 2025. And so, they help us to envision what our best school could be. And so, we've got a lot of really good ideas of what that youth conference looks like, we've got best practice, we've got experts who want to help us. So, we've got our own ideas and a lot of help, and some great models to refer from, refer to. So, we're really excited about what that could be. What we do know is it hasn't been done before in this way. And so, once again, St. Louis Park is out in front, saying, what if? What if we did it like this, and how cool would it be to pull this off? And so, we're super excited.
And if I can just add, so, the youth conference and the input from students would be at the center of what the core planning team then would wrestle with when they came together in, beginning in August, right? So, that data, that input from students would be at the center of it, so that truly student voice would be, you know, the foundation for whatever our strategic plan looks like for the next five years.
Absolutely. And wouldn't be a replacement, I also want to point out, two students being part of the core planning team also, so not a replacement. In the past, we've had two to four to six youth members of the core planning team, and we would seek that again. In a perfect world, we're able to recruit students from the middle-school grades through the high-school grades, so that we have students who are already active now in the plan, and active all the way through the plan. So, ideally, somebody who's a student now carries all the way through the full plan. We were able to do that with the last plan, hopefully, we can do that again with this plan. So, and I want to also bring it back now to the top of the slide, and point out that this plan has a different title to it. And you'll notice here that we're calling it the 2020 to 2025 Strategic Plan for Racial Equity Transformation. And that's very intentional, because we're truly heading into this plan in a different manner than we've headed into other strategic plans. So, for this strategic plan, we're really looking at it as a singular umbrella plan that includes all of our systemic racial equity work. So, it truly is our racial equity plan, our strategic plan, and it includes all of our other plan work. So, our technology plan lives here, our budget planning lives here, our communications planning lives here, our World's Best Workforce Plan lives here. So, all of those planning components live here, our cabinet members are part of the core planning team, so that truly all of our work is integrated and aligned across the board to our strategic plan and our racial equity transformation work. So that every time you hear a report from a cabinet member, you are assured that it's aligned to strategic plan, and it's aligned to our racial equity transformation, so that we can hopefully, the plan is, and all of our data shows, move that racial equity piece, and move that student accountability meter, and eventually move those measures for student achievement for students across the board, is our plan. And that's the way this next strategic plan will be designed. So, I want to hop back into the timeline. So, we talked about the youth conference. The next big piece is August through October, and the intention here is late August, so as we're heading into kind of the back-to-school mentality, we're hoping we can get one, maybe two meetings in right before school starts. So, summer vacations have ended, everybody's dusting off notebooks, getting ready for back-to-school, we can get a couple of meetings in right before school starts, because we're envisioning that it's going to take about five meetings of the core planning team to be able to really draft the plan. Seems like a lot. That's significantly fewer meetings than last time, and it's important for you to know that we're also planning, everybody take a deep breath, we're planning to go after mission, and we're planning to take a look at core values. So, Superintendent Osai and I share a belief that the mission is perhaps just too long for people to digest. And so, we'd like to spend a full day taking a look at mission. We'd also like to revisit core values, to make sure that they truly represent not only students, but teachers and staff, and all of the users and stakeholders in the community. So, to do that work, and also do the work of the strategic plan, we really need the five days. But we believe we can do that between August and October. Then, we plan to bring a draft back to you, the school board members, in November for your input, and then bring it back to you one more time in December for your adoption, so that we can then use the plan, starting in the new year. So, that is the plan as of right now, and we'd be happy to take your questions.
Thank you for this really great overview of the work. It has been one of the things I've been most proud of in my service to the Board, is being on that core team, as well as one of the action teams in the early days. I really want to commend the effort to focus the student voice in a very tangible way. I'm very excited about the youth conference. And then, my question with the structure in February, March and May recruiting, March and May assessment, are the core team members going to be doing homework in March, April, May, June, to get ready for August, so that those five days are, hit the ground running?
Yes. Intention would be they'd be selected, and then they'd all be part of the Google Drive, so that as the different stakeholder groups are surveyed, as the different inputs are completed across the board, we envision a World Cafe, different outreaches to different community groups, kind of feeding the drive, so to speak. As they're completed, then they would have access to the drive, and I would communicate with them and say, okay, check in, here's four more things that have been added. And so, those members would get teaser notes or newsletters from me, saying, be sure to check this out this week, and, you know, maybe it's monthly updates. Yes, because it's just too much. We've asked core team members before of, you know, thud, here's four inches of content, read it all by Monday, and found that it's not digestible in that way. So, we're hoping that with this method as well, granted, you know, it's still a lot to read, but it's also a large amount of time. So, we're hopeful that people will digest it in small bites.
So, I have a question about the youth conference aspect, and I'm sure that that will get some more details at some point. But I think I'm most curious, you were saying like June, I'm thinking is that during the school day, is that post-school day? And part of my concern here, I'll just share, is like, making sure that as we get diverse voices that participate in that conference, and I think as we start to get out of the school day, or, you know, some of those kind of challenges, that we risk some challenges there. But I'm sure that there's lots more details to come, but I'm just, that's the one thing that's, one of the things that's percolating in my mind, is making sure that youth conference does kind of reflect what we're looking for ultimately.
Absolutely. Yeah. We've spent actually about 45 minutes today just talking exactly about that, and really thinking about, you know, there's so many different components that we have to take into consideration. We are thinking right now that it would be after the school year ends, but we're recognizing that that's going to require proper planning on the front end to make sure students are aware, and we're going to have to have transportation set up. So, there's a number of things that, you know, we're believing is going to be required to make sure that we can pull this off, to ensure that we have a representation of our school district as participating in the conference. And certainly, as we move forward, there will be more specific details about the conference and location and all of those components.
Lots of thoughts and comments. The Strategic Plan for Racial Equity Transformation. I'm so glad to be part of a school district that is brave enough to do this work. Dr. King's letter from Birmingham Jail talked about why we can't wait, and I'm so glad that St. Louis Park is not waiting, that we are not waiting for someone else to do this, we're not waiting for someone else to have a youth conference or a summit, that we are going to be the ones that are doing it. And it may not be perfect, but we're going to do that work. My excitement, my enthusiasm, my practical giddiness of having the students and the youth conference and the summit, and I am hoping that we, as board members, are going to be able to be involved with that and work with those kids. And I mean, how absolutely amazing that that is where we are starting and grounding our work, is with the kids, that's why we're here. So, I'm very, very, the work that you guys have already done, I'm already so hopeful and so amazed. I guess one, that kind of a follow-up question that goes with Collins is, is there going to be like a limit on the number of students? Is there going to be, and I, once again, I know that there's lots more that you guys have in plan, is there a limit or an application process, or do you have any ideas of how students will be able to apply or be chosen?
Yeah, thank you for your question. So, we are working with an outside consultant for the development of this youth conference, and making sure that, you know, from the facilitation standpoint, but also just from a technical standpoint of all of the different things that go into bringing students together in this fashion. Now, if it was up to me personally, I would like to allow any student that is willing to take their summer, you know, their valuable summer days and be a part of it, right? I'm recognizing that, at this point, I guess where I'm starting is that I would like to open it up to everyone. I know we may run the risk, and this would be the best problem to have, that we just have so many kids, right, that we run out of space, but I'm willing to take that risk. So, at this point, the way I envision it is that we're going to open it up to every student, but I'm also going to be targeting students that I know have served in different leadership capacities throughout our organization as well, but making sure that if anybody wants to participate, they can be a part of this.
Introducing this and helping move this forward. I agree with Laura completely, I want to be there too. Yeah, all of us, we're in.
Thank you.
Don't tell the students that, though, because we don't want to scare anybody off of showing up. The whole school board wants to listen in. Okay, next up, Policy Development, First Reading Policy 519, Interviews of Students by Outside Agencies. Flower.
Not as exciting as our strategic planning update. Checking in on MSBA's website, there are no updates. MSBA hasn't had any updates to this specific policy since 2002. We last updated in 2006, and after reviewing with a couple of members of our team, we see that this policy doesn't really have any updates that we'd like to add at this time, and it's currently in line with the practices that we are actually doing at the schools.
The one change that I would like to propose is that we make the addition of parents and guardians everywhere, particularly in the general statement of policy. I think that there's at least three places, in A and B, that we use just parents, and I think we should change that, right, to parents and guardians. That also aligns with what we're trying to do in other policies. So, maybe if we could just do a find and replace on that. Any other comments from anybody about this particular policy? Laura?
I understand that a lot of this is actually guided by the maltreatment of minor acts, so it's not like we're changing the act. But I was wondering, and I read through it, and I'm trying to scour, so perhaps someone could answer the question, is there any consideration, because I know that they could be interviewed by whoever the investigation or the judge deems, but is there, do students have any right to request an advocate to be with them, such as a counselor, or a social worker, another trusted adult? Because I'm thinking of our trauma students, this would be a very traumatic experience. I know that a lot of times in these cases, the parent or guardian may not be allowed. Is there, I mean, is that in here, and I just couldn't find it?
I was looking for something like that, too. I think that our Director of Special Services, Tammy Reynolds, can speak to that.
They often will ask if the student's comfortable on their own, and if they're not, then they do allow a staff person to sit. We can't talk, but it's a familiar person to the student that creates a level of comfort, sits next to them, but they're not allowed to interfere or say anything that might guide the student's response.
So, the question there then, Laura, to follow up, is, I think that's our practice, and I don't think that that's anywhere in the policy itself, and I think that much of the policy is kind of verbatim from the language of the law, right? So, I'm wondering if that's something that would be appropriate to find a place to add, or whether because of the statutory language there, whether we can't. What do you think, Tammy?
I don't think it's ours to be able to add to that, because they could tell us no, and we'd have to make other arrangements with them, or delay it, or come to some term that would make the students still feel comfortable and safe, and yet meet the requirements that are placed on us to allow them access to the students.
So, it seems like we need to legally leave the language as it is right now, but we're comfortable knowing that our practice is to advocate for our students' comfort wherever possible.
And so far, that's worked really well for a lot of years, so they've been good.
Great. Any other questions or comments, concerns about this one? Okay, so Flower can make those changes to parents and guardians, and we'll see this for a second reading at our next meeting. Okay, next up, Policy Development Second Reading, Policy 437, Staff Participation in Political Activities. I believe we do have some work to do here. Hi, Chair Casey.
Yes, we talked about this policy two weeks ago. We kind of discussed how this isn't a required policy, this doesn't have an MSBA model policy associated with it, there's no statutory language here, and as Mr. Pryor shared with us last time, all the activities that are prohibited here in this policy are generally prohibited by our stamp handbook anyway. And so, while I want to absolutely encourage our staff to participate in political activities as appropriate... as appropriate, I don't think anyone is really looking to this policy to define what's appropriate. I think actually it might muddy the waters a little bit in terms of what is allowed and who is allowed to do it and where. And so I think we can, I would rather see the more general language in the, in the staff handbook be applying here. So I would make, like to make a motion that we just delete this policy altogether with the understanding that our staff is receiving this information in a, in a different way.
Do you think that that accurately reflects our conversation from a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting? But does anybody have any other comments that they want? Right, I just, so did you, you moved?
I moved to delete this policy.
All right, is there a second? Laura seconds, all right. So let's continue the discussion from there then. If anybody has anything else they want to add?
No, I appreciate Director Crier's work with the employee handbook and that, let's just let policy be policy and handbooks be handbooks and not, we have a lot to look at. We don't need this one too.
There is that consideration as well, yes. So if there are no other discussion points, I guess, deal with this on the, the act, I think this is, we have to wait and do this on the, oh, it's not on the action agenda. So we're going to do it now? Okay, so all in favor of deleting policy 437, staff participation in political activities? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any other discussion? No, all right. Delete it. Sarah, go right now on the website and remove it from all notes everywhere like it never even existed. All right. Look at us being so efficient and streamlined. Nailed it. All right. Next up, the consent agenda. The only thing on the consent agenda this week is where our approval of minutes. Anybody have anything that they want to pull off from there? Nope? Okay, all in favor? Motion. Sorry, let's move first. Colin's moving. Thank you Colin. Second? Second. Karen, thank you as always to our clerk for keeping me attempting to do what I'm supposed to do. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven zero. All right. On to the action agenda, labor agreement between our clerical administrative assistants of Park Schools, CAPS group. Mr. Crier, can you, is there anything you want to say about this? You are, you have been kicked off of the table there tonight, apparently.
It's what happens when you come late. Yeah, this labor agreement is one of the last in the series for the 2019-21 series of collective bargaining agreements. We have approximately thirty-four people in our clerical bargaining unit. It was a, it was a really good process with the group again. We tackled some very difficult things. Obviously, there's a salary increase and health insurance stuff. But there's also some things that I think can be contentious for people if they're not looking at the long run of what's good for the group. And one of those things we worked through is being able to hire people above step one of the salary schedule. And you think, well, why would giving, why would, why would giving people more be a problem in bargaining? And it's because the people in bargaining didn't get the more when they were hired. And under this contract, you know, so that could have been a problem if we didn't get that, why should they get that? And we, we worked through the, the process that the contract a while ago said all people must start on step one. And we talked about the competitive nature of the market. And if we had the high school secretary from Hopkins or Edina come and apply for a job here, why would we expect that that person would start over on step one when we don't do that for teachers or other people who have valid experience that we can confirm and then place on one, two, you know, step one, two, three, or some higher, a higher level? So we worked through the logistics of that and came to an agreement on initial step placement when a person has proven experience verified by the HR department. We also, like we've done with our other groups, we provided a smaller deferred comp contribution for people starting in their first year of employment. And when we looked at our deferred compensation participation rates, we're finding that less than thirty percent of the staff are contributing to deferred comp. And I think one of the, the things that's stopping that is that in many of our hourly employment contracts, you had to complete four years of service. And so now you're in your fifth year of service and you haven't built up a practice of contributing to deferred comp. And now you're into your fifth year and you're living on that paycheck because everybody does. And it's hard to start putting money away in your fifth year when you haven't done it in your first four years. So we're, we've, with the help of Patricia Magnussen, we looked at, at adding this provision. And so, you know, new employees could get up to five hundred dollars matched in their first four years of service. And then that number moves up as they, you know, have some additional experience. So I'm very excited about that. And I think one of the other ones that can be contentious is we increased the probationary period from nine months to twelve months. Last contract, we went from six months to nine months. And what we constantly talked about is in school districts, September is different than October, October is different than January, January is different than May. And we really need to see people perform in a, in a full school cycle. And this year, the bargaining team agreed that yes, they saw the wisdom of that and we went to, to that model. So there was a lot of really good collaborative problem solving along with, oh yeah, there's a, you know, insurance change and a, and a salary change.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah.
Thank you, and thanks to the CAPS negotiating team for this. I just have a question. It's not specific to this contract, but it's something that I noticed in a previous one too. And that's that there's been a change to, this might be for Patricia actually, checks and not having direct deposit anymore. And I think last fall, it was like, if you need a check, you can come and pick it up. But now, as of January, it was, everybody needs to be on direct deposit. So how is that gone? Have we had any problems getting everybody onto direct deposit?
So, so far, so good. So, so far, so good. We did a lot of handholding. We sent out a lot of letters. We stuffed checks. We let people know, starting all the way back in September, that this, this is coming, make sure. We had all of the hand-printed manual checks with Mary Lou and her shining face at the front desk. Mary Lou would hand people their check and, and a, a, a direct deposit signup sheet. And so, you know, yes, we've been moving people towards that. And so it's, I think it's went smoothly and I think people understand, I don't know why I haven't done this before. It just goes in the bank and there it is. And I don't have to go take it and put it in there.
Anybody else?
Well, Rick, thank you again. What I really appreciate is that you are eminently reasonable and working to make all of this cohesive amongst our agreements to the extent possible and that you're doing so, abiding by the values of the district, which include respecting the work that these people are bringing to our students and to our efforts and wanting to respect and value that work. So thank you very much. All right, so is there a motion to approve the agreement? Moved by Laura. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? None. Passes seven zero. All right, I just want to throw out here, before we all start flapping our gums during communications and transmittals, that we are poised to have one of the shortest board meetings. And out of respect for our staff and cabinet members, if nothing else, let's just keep it together, people, all right? Communications and transmittals, after I just gave that warning, who dares to talk? Of course, go ahead, Karen.
Of course I will. So Aston and I attended the Twin West St. Louis Park Business Council meeting on Thursday. It was a good session. Brad Bachen, the president of Citizens International Bank, was awarded a lifetime achievement from the Twin West Chamber. And he talked about a time, he thought it was about ten years ago, when Kara Mueller, our career in technical education lead teacher here, went into the bank as an intern to learn about finance jobs, to bring that back to the school environment. And he said, I sure wish I could have hired her. So kudos to Kara, who will also be participating in the Twin West Career in Technical Education Forum coming up. The other things we talked about were our new children-first executive director and who's going to talk about the breakfast? And I, the date of it, or I can, I don't, I don't care, but it's coming up on, I'll do it. Thursday, March 5th, 7:15 a.m. at the Doubletree Hotel. You do need to register in advance because it fills up. It's free to attend, but they will be asking for donation to cover costs. So that is all I have from Twin West. Thank you.
And thanks to Sarah Thompson for all of her hard work right now, cheering the breakfast and getting ready for it.
I had the opportunity to meet with Cheryl Yookim. Yookim, thank you. I apologize Cheryl. We had about a four-hour-long conversation. It was pretty amazing. One thing that I'm really excited about is her work that she is trying to bring with this legislative session, in particular, the non-exclusionary discipline. So we're going to be meeting and talking about that as that moves forward. The other thing is I am the liaison to the senior advisor council, senior advisory council for the senior program. Unfortunately, I'm not able to go to their meetings. However, I am meeting with Angie and Birdie to discuss ways that I can be supportive of the senior program in St. Louis Park and then also just continue to really promote it as an excellent and unique program here in St. Louis Park for lifelong education.
Okay, so I was able to attend one thing this week, last week, two weeks. And that was a art festival showing today at the, at the city hall. It's all of our high school art students had, they picked a bunch of art and put it up in the city hall. And it's a great showing of, of pencil drawings. And there's some pottery there and a couple of other mediums there. So you should make your way over there and take a look at their, it's right there on the third floor, right outside of the chambers where they meet. And it'll be up there until Tuesday. I think they take it down after President's Day. Yes.
And Ken didn't take the opportunity to be the proud father, but Simone Morrison has a display that I was able to see there with a beautiful teapot and some teacups. Yeah, really. But if you could stop by or if you happen to be in city hall, yeah, please go up to the third floor and just check it out. Our students are, this is just another example of how awesome our students are.
And there was, you can do that one.
I had the opportunity to also attend the Aquila play. My son is a proud alumni of the Aquila Theater Arts Program. And so it was very exciting to see that. And so I want to echo what the superintendent had to say. And I also want to shout out to the teachers and the parents and the volunteers who helped with that. There's a lot of hours put into that, pulling costumes together, wrangling kids, keeping kids quiet, making sure microphones are working, all sorts of things. And just seeing how well those kids move through some of that stuff, just to see the professionalism of all the kids up on stage at such an early age is, is really exciting. And so I'm really excited about that. Really excited about all four of our elementary programs having a theater arts program this year. So that's very exciting. The other thing I got to participate in recently was at Peter Hobart. And I attended a bring it home meeting that they have there, which is for the families of the multicultural and multilingual families. And a really neat program in terms of bringing in parents to talk about things and even simple things that we might take for granted, just like report cards. And what does that mean? And what does that look like? And how does that fit into what my culture said about report cards and grades and things like that? And the conversations that they were having there were really interesting. And it was a really great thing to be able to sit there and hear those conversations and to see our schools doing programs like that as well.
Do you want to talk about Peter Hobart?
No, I'm not.
I was going to do AMSD.
Sure.
Okay. Last Friday, Chair Tombak and I were able to attend the legislative preview at the Association of Metropolitan School District's monthly board meeting. And our superintendent, Osei, gave a fantastic presentation talking to legislators and other superintendents and school board members about, a little bit about kind of our budget and what, and some policy things and what kinds of effects various kinds of legislation would have on, on our district to kind of put an example, bring it home for, for some of the legislators, I think that was. And it was very well received. So thank you superintendent for that, for very, very excellently representing us there. We also heard from Commissioner Ricker from MDE. And then there was a legislative panel of the majority chair and the minority leader of the two, of the education committees in the two houses. So Representative Yookim and Representative Sandra Erickson from the House and Senator Carla Nelson and Senator Chuck Weaver from the Senate. And it was a lively, a lively conversation. So the legislative session starts tomorrow. And so I hope you all will be paying attention because I think there's going to be a lot to, a lot to talk about over the next few months.
And a fantastic, yet another fantastic reason that we're proud to be where we are with the people that we have here and the leadership and the community. Amen, yeah. So then I will say that there were Ken and Ann and I, along with several members of cabinets, Superintendent Osei, were able to go to Peter Hobart this morning for a meet and greet invitation for families and students for National African-American Parent Involvement Day. Do I have that right? And so we had, it was really awesome because Cam Wada, who is one of our racial equity coaches, he insisted that any student who came in had to come and introduce themselves to three different people. And so a bunch of fourth and fifth graders primarily came and chatted us up. And I know I shouldn't always say that they're adorable, but oh my God, it was so great. They are just great. And so thank you so much to Cam for arranging that. And Julia McBride Beebe, who, Beebe, who was our former, Aston's former executive administrative assistant, also took a big part in planning that. And it was lovely to see her there. And so it was just a wonderful morning altogether. And so thank you to everybody who was able to make it out. And thank you especially to Cam and Julia for doing so much to make that happen. So I'm going to quit talking now. And so I think that was totally worth it. Everything everybody said was great. All right, thank you all very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Moved by Ken? Second?
Second.
Second by Colin? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're out of here. Passes seven zero. Good night, everybody. All right, we're out of here. Pass the seven zero. Good night, everybody.